I'd like to call the Berlin School Committee meeting to order.
Hearing.
Yes, and I'd also like to call the budget hearing to order. And we're going to begin with the budget hearing. Thank you all for coming tonight, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, so good evening again, thanks for coming. It's always great to have parents come and ask questions. So I'm going to open up the budget hearing to questions after I present, because you might have some questions coming in that might be answered. So I just ask that if there are questions, it just kind of pulls off at the end. And I'll also invite administrative team to also maybe answer some questions specifically about the budget as well. I also wanted to just kind of explain a little bit of the budget process, because I think there's been some confusion of what that needs to look like, or how that should look like. And I really can't say enough of how excited I am to have people here to really be asking. But just for some clarity, typically a budget hearing has really time to just act here in the budget, because the budget planning and process has really already taken part at this point. But I like to open up the discussion as well. Also, this year what we have done is we had a meeting, and it was just Berlin. We did this in December. We did it again in February. That focused on the process of the budget. So we welcome that for next year, when we do have special meetings that are just for Berlin School Committee. Those are, just so you know, those are really talking about the budget and open it up for communication and discussion and questions in that process as well. Also for next year, we're hoping to have the budget hearing done by last week of March. So the first week of April, we'll actually do a final vote of the budget. So we're trying to find ways of improving and, you know, give feedback from people of how we can continue with the communication. I did send out for the one call email last Friday. I sent out the line item budget to all of the parents of Berlin. If you did not receive a copy of it, we do have some copies there at the table. I'm sorry, at the chair in the front row. There's also a Berlin budget booklet that's been put together, and that's up there as well. And everything is on the BBRSD website. If you go into the superintendent's corner, you'll see all of those things. And Tohonto is up there, okay? Because we have the budget hearing in Tohonto of last week. And I'm going to excuse my voice, hopefully it stays through. This is much better than it was last week, but hopefully it'll stay through some of our budget. So I just talked a little bit about the process, but just so that everybody understands where does this budget come from. No, not maybe the next one, the superintendent does not just all of a sudden get a number. There's a huge process that goes on the way. We start believing in that back in October. So in October of this upcoming year, we're going to start planning already for FY16. And administrators start to talk about, you know, what are our focus? What are our goals? What's our vision? What we hope to see for the upcoming year and the following year. At the secondary level, the teachers were submitted, within the content areas, were submitted the budget and were told what they needed to do. At the elementary level, there's PLC meetings, there's staff meetings, and they have more informal conversations about where the needs are in the school system. And then the administrators meet collaboratively. We meet at the beginning. They hate it when I start saying in the first week of October, people are going to start talking about budget. But that's really when we start having bigger discussions, and then we still get more focal. By December, I have already met with our administrative team. I've already met with the business department, and we've put together some numbers. What we have to do is we have to in December submit to the towns a budget by December 31st. So because of that, typically what we do is we give the most ideal budget educationally that we can, putting in all kinds of dream ideas that we would love to see in an ideal world, but knowing that the reality is we have to cut along the way until we get to this point. That usually means that it's the most educationally sound budget with numbers from the previous year, because the state doesn't give us numbers until sometimes till the end of March, or even the end of May. So we're going by last year's numbers of what the state gives us in order to support that budget. The other piece that's really important to know is that we can never go back to the town once the school committee votes a budget. We can never go back to the town to vote a higher number. We can only keep it the same or make it lower. So that's why it always starts off in December. It does start off a little bit higher, because we have so many unknowns in December of what's going to happen in September of the following year. So that's why typically we'll see the numbers a little bit higher. And then they come down as we go along. Then, once we get closer, once the finance department, the finance committee, the select board, they start having a better picture of what happens in the town and what their needs are. Then we get a recommendation from the finance committee of what they can afford, and then we try to see how can we match that, or can we match that? And you'll see tonight that we have, the FinCom has recommended a vote in a 5% increase of the budget. We did not get to that, but we got as close as we could. And we'll talk about that as we go a little bit further in the presentation. Estimated revenue projections. This is just to show you, these are revenue numbers. What that means is the town has to give a certain number, a certain budget. These are all numbers and uses of funds that we use that's outside of the general operating budget. So when you see $185,000, that's how much of our school choice numbers that we are using to offset our budget. Just to give you an understanding of where some of the comparisons are, $185,000 is for FY15, but for our current year, for FY14, we used $300,000 of our school choice money, which is a lot more than what we actually receive every year. And you'll be able to see that as well in some future slides. I'll show you where that projection is. We have about $10,000 of circuit breaker that we're going to be using. Circuit breaker is funding that we receive from the state for students that are in out-of-district placements. So if we have a student that we cannot educate for one reason or another that goes, that attends Berlin, that lives in Berlin, that we cannot educate in our schools, we then have to pull what they call an out-of-district placement. Some of those placements are anywhere between $50,000 to $300,000 a year that we have to find funding for. From that number, they take four times over foundation. Anything over 40, let's say 45,000 is about where we are. I'm not sure.
Forty thousand right now.
Is it forty right now? The funding fluctuates. So $40,000 is four times foundation. If we are paying for somebody $80,000, four times foundation is 40,000. You subtract the 40,000 from the 80. Your difference is 40,000. And what was the percentage rate this year?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So out of that 40,000, we get 72% of that money brought back to us. So you can see out of $80,000, the little pillow that we actually get. So we have funding that we can get. We get about $10,000 a year, so that's what we can use here to offset some of our costs. The other piece is preschool. We get tuition for preschool, and that's the amount of preschool that we receive. And then your grants. Your grants funding is approximately $108,000. And then our school lunch. We receive school lunch funds, and that offsets our budget by about $25,000. Now, out of all of those funds and resources that I just showed you, told you about, these are the areas that I'm looking at. So some of the things I wanted to show you, first of all, is your school choice numbers. You can see that at the end of last year, we had $334,000 in the budget, in our revolving account. We're projecting to receive $159,000, projecting to use right now $300,000, which is, this is last year's vote, okay, for our current budget. That leaves us a balance of $194,000. You can see the difference of our balance. We do not have $300,000 to give this year for FY15's budget. So what we have to do is we're going to use, we're looking at receiving $160,000. We're still planning on using $185,000, which is going to leave us with $169,000. So you can see our balance of school choice is really dropping. What we decided was that since Berlin is getting 1% less of their proportionate share at Tohonto, which is about $76,000 difference, this was the better here to try to jump down here as much as we could. And I'll show you what our plan is for progression in the future to sustain the budgets, okay? And this is another piece that we have to look at, is your non-resident tuition. You have a district that was actually paying tuition for one of the students to attend our school. That IEP has been signed, and that is no longer out of district or in district, in your case, tuition cost. So we have this running balance, but you'll see that as of next year, when we start planning for FY16, that's another $15,000 that no other is going to have. So we received 15 this year. We're going to offset it and use it out of it until it will be gone for next year. Another source that I think is important to look at is if you look at your Chapter 70 funding. Last year, you received $500,000 with Chapter 70. This year, we're anticipating to receive $437,000. So you can see there a little over $62,000 difference in the Chapter 70. Chapter 70, it's not considered as part of our revenue per se of how we offset, because your Chapter 70 is part of your operation, our operating budget that helps the town to support the operating budget. Another piece that's important to look at is our net school choice and our charter tuitions. You can see what we're predicting for school choice. This is what we're receiving in funds for school choice money. So right now, we have 28. We are losing 10 students in 5th grade. Next year will be coming up to Tohonto. So Tohonto will get those students as a receiving student here for the following year. But what will happen is we'll lose 10, but we just opened slots, three slots, in our kindergarten level. So there'll still be seven less children at $5,000 apiece. That's about $35,000 less that we'll also be receiving in the future. Wanted to talk a little bit about our MCAS scores. If you look at our MCAS scores, this side is your Berlin Memorial School. This is where they scored in ELA, and this is where the state scored. This is where we scored in math, and this is where the state scored. So you can see that we have some concerns with our ELA program, our curriculum. We started to work on that a little bit this year. And we're going to talk a little bit more about what we're going to be doing for FY15 as our plans to help support the ELA. And just to clarify, this is for all grades. I wanted to show you the trend. So if you look at this side, this is our school side, and the green is the state. And you can see where we've been, and we started to drop in 2012, and we dropped significantly this last year. Part of this drop is because the state, the MCAS, has changed its curriculum, its testing, to align with the Common Core standards. We're just getting there at this point. So for next year, for FY15, we're going to be showing even more changes in our Common Core standards. So we should be seeing some changes starting to occur here for next year. This is part of what we're doing. This year, we developed a literacy committee that included teachers and administration from all buildings, and we also included parents from each community to be a part of our decision for the literacy. The committee has identified where the gaps were. So they've been working all year, looking at a full literacy program. What does it look like? Because literacy is not just reading and writing. There are many components of the literacy component. And so, program, I'm sorry. And so what happened is, they looked at all different ideas. They then showed me, Carol then met with me and said, "I want to show you what the literacy committees were working on, and here's where we've identified many gaps." By looking at the MCAS scores and seeing our drop so significant, we said, "We need to do something drastic. We need to make these changes, and we can't wait over time and try to, like, we have to do something for our students so that they're not falling behind." So what they've done is that they recommended, so I recommended to Carol, "We need to do a core program, a core reading program." We've also spoke with Sally Grimes. If any of you have not heard of her, she's a national literacy specialist, specializes especially in pre-K to grades two, because of the early literacy components. We also spoke with her, and then we said, "We have to do something drastic. We have to do something quick, and we have to do something that's going to be really progressive for getting our kids back on track." And that's when we said, "Let's look at the core program." So what we did was Carol researched five literacy core programs. She then brought them to the administrative team, and we looked at them. And I had suggested to the team that we needed to bring to the literacy committee a couple of curriculum components, so that they could decide which one would be the best one for our school and our students. So what we did was we broke it down into two, because we didn't want to bring all five, because some of them we felt were missing components that we know need, that we need to have. So we brought that to. From that point, the literacy committee then did webinars. They had presenters come, and they did their own research on the two different core curriculum. From that point, they have chosen one core program. They then recommended that program to me, but I said, "Yes, I would agree to that program." And that program's on the back, so you're all more than welcome to look at it. That's a grade two, I believe, correct? And those are all the different components in the literacy. It looks at assessments, it's reading, it's level readers. It gives them all kinds of supplements and supports that they will need going forward. And so we did work a lot on Empowering Writers this year. We're going to continue with Empowering Writers. We'll be able to embed that in with the writing program that it offers, because it supports one another. So that's the big work that they've been working on, the literacy team. So I commend Carol Bradley and the literacy committee, and Tracy, or I do, because you are part of that committee as well. So I commend the literacy committee for doing that work and that research. So we are planning on, the purchase of this program is quite extensive, and it will take two years for us to be able to purchase the program. And right now, Carol and I have been working with McGraw-Hill to see if there's a way we can even extend it over a longer period of time, so that it's not impacting our budget so significantly. So we're trying to do that, but for right now, at this day and age, what we're talking about is looking at purchasing the program to its entirety. To also, what this also will have is a parent portal. So it'll allow parents to be able to also reinforce what we're teaching in the classroom. You'll be able to work on it at home, its internet capacity. And we just felt that if we're going to do something like this, parents really want to be involved. We want to help the parents be involved, so it's not so difficult of what we do, or I don't know what they're doing. You'll be able to follow along right on the parent portal, which is fabulous. This is for grades K1 and 2 for FY15. In our FY16 budget, we will be purchasing for grades 3, 4, and 5. That's what we'll be doing for them. So in June, the teachers will also be provided with a workshop from this company. We figured that June was best. It's after MCAS, it's after all of that, very end of the school year. And they'll have a full day of training, or half day of training.
A half day of training.
Half day of training with this program. They'll be given their books. Over the summer, we're going to be working on the curriculum alignment. Carol, Karen, myself, we're going to be working with the teachers over the summer to get it rolling and see what we can do for that. And then in the fall, we are having Sally Grimes coming to our district. She's going to be, which I said was a national literacy specialist. She's actually going to be working with our teachers in grades K1 and 2. She'll be focusing a lot on the professional development, going into the classrooms, teaching them strategies, showing them some effective practices, to also assist them in using the core reading program. So she'll be here all year. And then the other piece that we're really excited about is Sally is also planning on, we're going to do a parent literacy night. So for parents for grades K1 and 2, they'll be able to join Sally, and she's going to do a great training on how parents can also support the literacy development for their students. So really trying to do that parent outreach. And Sally, I think, I don't know if anybody doesn't know Sally. I think she's just add-ins with her knowledge and expertise. So she'll be assisting. And then, so I think that's it on that process and where our plans are for next year. Show you a little bit of the enrollment history. This could be a little bit confusing for people. Clearly, this year, grade 6 is not, because they're all are here. But if you look at the green, 27 was in FY12 in 4th grade. In 5th grade, they're 29. So if you look here at the numbers, you can see that it's small numbers in our preschool, but then when you start looking at our kindergarten and our 1st grade, these are the areas we're really watching right now. 36 when they're in kindergarten, went to 32 in 1st grade, back up to 36 in 2nd. And if you look at the, if you just follow along, it was 28 to 26, and this year we have 29. So we're kind of watching that trend and that pattern of where they are. Currently, last year at this time, we had 25 students in kindergarten enrolled. This year, we have 16 so far, am I correct? And that includes three school choice students. So we have 13 resident students enrolled in kindergarten this year. So we have nine less than what we had last year at this time. Just to look at where our school choice numbers are, like I told you, our 5th grade, we have 10 school choice students currently. They will be going up, so you can just kind of see the trends. We have less and less school choice, and we're getting more of our own. And this just shows you, it's hard to compare this over a long period of time, because this is the first year that we actually have no 6th grade. So when I do it next year, we'll start being able to build more of our trends. Same is true with the budget. I'm showing, I'll show you the budget as far back as 2012, but it's hard to follow the trends, because this is only the first year. FY15 will only be the second year under this composition. So I talked to you a little bit earlier about school choice, and this is what I wanted to show you in regards to a plan. If you start to see how much we're dropping in using the school choice, and where we dropped here. Again, this is to offset the operating budget. This is above and beyond the operating numbers. If you look at the end of next year at 169, and if we carry it through, if we're projecting to receive 130, and then we drop to 165, we're doing $20,000 less, because we don't want that drastic of a change. And then we have 134. It's not until FY17 do we really start to balance out in using the amount of money that we get in the previous year to use the following year. So this is where we'll start to balance out at this point. And again, this is only in my glass ball imagination future, but this is all I can predict at this point in time. We don't know where the new growth in River Bridge and where that will be, but in the current standing, this is what it will look like. Budget categories, really what you want to look at when you look at things like this, is your instructional component. Anything between 70 and 85 is more of what they call more of a balanced budget approach, because that's where the majority of your fees are going, is in instructional services. 6% is in administration. Your other school services are 8%. Your operational budget in regards to maintenance and operations is 10%. Your fixed charges, acquisitions, and your tuitions. Your tuition's about 2%. Now, that looks so nice here, but it didn't look good up here, so I apologize. I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a breakdown. This is not every single line item that's in your budget, but you have all the line items. So if you see anything like on the far left, you see there's a bunch of numbers, right? So when you see things that start with 1, so 1,100, 1,200, 1,300, 1,500, all of those is part of your administration. And these are all the different things. Usually, when people think administration, they think superintendent, principal, curriculum director, special ed director. That's not the case. So I want to explain a little bit of what that administration actually entails. So it's the school committee. We have a secretary who actually can't be here this evening, but that we pay every time she's here. And then also, the school committee has voted this past year to have our policies online, so that people can just readily access. If you haven't used it, just try it one day, just throw in a word as a search. You'll see how easy it is to use. And so there's a fee for that every year to keep that up and running. Every time we change a policy, we give that to MASC, and they update it for us. So it's been really great. But that's an additional increase. Of course, my salary and my secretary, it's part of the increases. Some of the contract reimbursements. And I put this up here because it looks like an increase on the line items, when in fact, these are what I had before. They're in a different line items. They've just been moved up in their more appropriate line feature items. So that's where it can be a little confusing on some of those line items too. Adjustments that we make throughout the year. What you see is what was voted on at the time a year ago, but we made adjustments, line adjustments throughout the year that aren't necessarily reflective when those line items. The finance department has our legal services. We're looking at our attorney's fees. And then the district-wide technology and our salary increase there. So all of those components are all part of administration. And there's more lines, but these are just the most that stood out the most on the budget. The next area that you see a difference of is your instructional services. We'll make a piece of about $17,710. And when you look, all of these areas, so this is where our, like Carol's position, Karen's position, the principal's position, this is where all of that comes under, is under the instructional technologies, services. So it's a little bit confusing. And no, these numbers, again, do not total up to that $17,710. These are just the most prominent ones in the budget that I felt would stick out. Also, in instructional services, so this is still part of the previous line, is all of our special education, paraprofessional, librarian, our materials for instruction. And you can see the largest increase in our budget is the English language arts, because of the curriculum that we're adopting, that we're bringing forward for next year. And then you can just see all the other areas here that are all part of instructional services. In other services, what we're looking at is, that's more on your health, your transportation units that you have, food services, custodian. That's really where these lines come. And then you have a maintenance of your building. We had to add $3,500 for environmental testing. We, as you've all have heard, is that we've had issues in some areas of the building throughout. And so we, every year, seem to be going over that line item. Has been zero, and we've never really put money in there. So we've had to find money in other line items and move it around throughout the year to pay for it. Well, we need to put money in for there, because we just want to be safe. But we've had to do it the last at least two years. I don't know how much prior to that, because that's all I can speak to. But, you know, we anticipate that we're going to want to do some follow-up environmental testing to make sure everything's fine for FY15. And then your routine repairs and rubbish removal, network communications. And then in your fixed charges, these are some of the areas in the fixed charges. And then you have your special education tuition. There's kind of an increase in the enrollment of the out-of-district placement. Now, this is part that I wanted to show everybody, because I felt this was really important for you to understand. When you are supporting a budget for the town, this area is what you are supporting for the town. These are all your revenue sources. So if you look at, yes, this looks like, it looks like a huge increase. This is a 5.86% increase. But if you look at the overall increase, including all of our revenues, it's a 2.3% increase, which is an increase of $67,000, okay? This is important, an important slide, because I think people get confused with what's revolving. Does that count? Why is it going? If you're using less than school choice, you have to offset it somehow, because we still need that money. We can't lose the money. We still need to use it, use it in a different source. So when we look at some of the needs to be addressed, I look at, these are some of the things that we're proposing in our budget. An additional paraprofessional salary, not person. And the reason why I wanted to say that is because you had an out-of-district tuition or an in-district for Berlin that was paying for a paraprofessional in your building. Doesn't mean that that IEP only required that person to only work with that child. What it means is that we were having a tuition that came in, and that was helping to offset a cost of salary. Well, that is no longer needed, but we do still need our paraprofessional. So the increase in the salary is in there. Also, you have a technology teacher that we want to bring in to include for our technology services and our technology programming classes. So there's a .4 FTE. The reduction that we're talking about is the librarian tutor to go from a 1.0 FTE to a 0.4 FTE. A custodial employee to go down to .2, which is no different than what you currently have for custodian. We made an adjustment throughout, in the middle of the year. We made an adjustment for our custodian. We're keeping the way the custodian placement is now. That's what we're keeping for next year. So there's no change. And then the classroom teachers, we have two teachers that are retiring. So we're not letting go any teacher, classroom teachers. We're just not replacing those two teachers that are retiring. So these are some of the other areas that we're looking at, that we're addressing in FY15, is our curriculum. FY15, is our curriculum, instructional supplies, some of our core reading program, which I explained out there and for you to look at. We have done a lot of work this year on developing a technology plan, a literacy plan. The administration has a strategic plan. We also have a professional development plan. We have a professional development committee that's drafting it. We're meeting tomorrow afternoon, and we've got one more meeting, and that should be done.
Data plan.
What else?
Data plan.
Data plan.
Oh, and a data plan. So we have all these plans that we've been putting in place this year with committees that we did not have previously. But the understanding is that by using these plans, they're helping us to stay focused educationally, to see how we can meet the needs of the students and how we can keep moving the district forward in a positive way. So what we have is also, we're going to have a new website design. We're hoping to get that launched off July 1st. We were just talking about that today in our admin meeting this morning, this afternoon. It looks like everything's all worked up, so we'll hopefully have a nice new website. We're also looking at the new technology integration in our classrooms. We're trying to develop, we have on the town floor, we have a warrant for computers that's going to help us with our computer labs. So we'll have a nice update computer labs when the kids come back to school in the fall, and we'll be all up and running to prepare them for technology instruction, as well as a park assessment as well. And then also, I already spoke about the teacher, our literacy plan, we're including Sally Grimes in our professional development, which is huge, and the school improvement plan is the other plan. And the most important part, maybe, is the community helping. We have a lot of parents and community members as well that are reaching out to do our gardening programs. All three schools are going to have a gardening, and we're really excited about that component. So some of the other pieces, these are the things we're going to be focusing on, continuing with our curriculum alignment. Next Generations is a science that just came out. We have to start implementing that, I believe, in FY16. So we'll start planning that for FY15. That's why you see some of the increases in the science, on the line item for the science, is to help support some of our science planning and curriculum. We start buying some of those items next year. We're hoping to start doing that next spring, because next, this upcoming fall or winter will be a lot of the planning process. Really have to take out and tease apart the actual curriculum, the science. Our two elementary school science programs are quite different from one another, so we need to really think about where does it need to match, where can we look at that? Also, retail is part of our, well, it's ESL, ELL, depends how you want to look at it, but it's, they all use different acronyms, but it's for English language learners. And so we have to help support our teachers in getting some of the training for that. It's a mandate in order for them to get their recertification for their licensure. So we're going to start that in FY15, but that's going to continue going. I'm thinking for the next three years, you know, they escape two, I'm thinking at least three. Benchmark assessments, we're going to revise, we're revisiting. We started with GamesWeb and the MAPS this year. You all heard about those two assessments. Their, GamesWeb is for, done three times a year, and it's currently for grades K through three. And MAP is, or NIWA. NIWA is the company, MAP is the assessment. So we kind of use them interchangeably, if you hear that. That's for grades, we've used those for grades four through 12 currently. But we're looking at next year of how we want to use the MAP and the NIWA. Do we want to bring MAP down to third grade for some students? Do we want some of those students in third grade to stay with the GamesWeb? So we're still having those discussions and trying to revise that. We'll look at that with the data team further. And then the eleven essential conditions of school effectiveness, those are the eleven key components that the Department of Education require all educational systems to run. So if you want to look that up on the DOE website, you're more than welcome to. If you want more information on it, please email me. I'd be more than happy to provide you the length of the information that we use. Those are the areas and the sound areas that we look at in defining our school, the way we need to improve and how we can move forward. And then the student support team process, some people might call them IST meetings, and some people have heard of this. If there's a student that may be struggling in school, that's not on an IEP, not on a 504, might need some extra support, the staff might bring us this child data to a meeting, and they talk about some kind of intervention and so forth, and how they can help to improve. At some points, they talk about how they can bring a parent involved, get the parent involved sooner, some we get the parent involved later, depends on the interventions that they use. So we're hoping to look at that a little bit further, as well as our district capacity accommodation plan. And so we're looking at all of those areas for next year as well. Data announces and changes in instruction, how we take that data that we see, and how we change what we're teaching or how we're teaching to meet the needs of those students so that they can do better. And part of that is what we call a tiered system of support, where we're looking at how we can give different interventions and different supports all the way through. Not just, this is the way I taught it, and it's done. It's how do you work with the groupings and so forth. Peer learning walkthroughs is, we're starting with the training process, I'll be working with the administration on the training of walkthroughs and what that looks like. And the hope is that we're going to continue between now and the end of the school year, and doing more of those trainings. But at this point, start having the teachers involved, so that next year, they can do some more training with each other, and also go to each other's classrooms and to provide each other with support on what they think each other's doing really well, and how we can help support some of those deep areas. And then, again, the technology integration. So what I wanted to show you here is, this is all funds. Okay? This includes all of the funding sources, revenues, everything, that's in the town operating budget. If you go all the way down, this is what the school committee has already voted to approve. Okay? They don't vote this, they vote... This is including all of the funds. Sorry, I hung wrong slide. So this is everything with the revenue. This is what we're currently proposing. So you can see the difference here between the two. Now, when we look at the operating budget, this is what they have voted. And this will be my recommendation tonight to the school committee. Two million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, five dollars. When you look at all the budgets, you look at Berlin Memorial specifically, on the operating side, not all funds. Remember I told you all funds? I showed you that slide, it was a stacking bar graph. And now we have 2.3% increase. When you look at the operating side itself, there's an increase of $146,000, which is a 5.86%. When we also look at Berlin's operating assessment, for, this is Tahanta, this is their portion of Tahanta's budget. This is what we're asking, which is a decrease of $48,000, which means, when you take the total of all of these and the differences of the assessment, the overall assessment difference is 1.96%, which is $98,646, as their overall change between both school budgets. And that is it. So I now open this up, and I invite the administrative team, if there's any questions that they would like to answer, please feel free. Please feel free to ask.
All right, I have a question.
Okay, Gail.
I just can't wrap my head around this.
Okay.
Why is it beneficial to cut the librarian to half-time when we are putting so much time and effort into a new literacy program? Why not integrate a full-time librarian to enhance and contribute to the new literacy program?
Great question. I will say that our rotations for our, for all of our specials, or unified arts, or I think that's how we want to, is that how we want to call them? Gail, right, is that what you're using, unified arts? For RPE, when they look at the rotation, they're all at a point four. When we're looking at the rotation with the librarian, we're also looking at a rotation of a point four. We're also looking at bringing in a technology certified technology teacher. And I will say that, you know, I've had a lot of great conversations with our librarian about this, because in the past, she has been able to integrate some technology. However, with the Department of Education, if we're actually doing technology classes and instruction, we need a licensed certified technology teacher. And so in order to do that, we have to post for a point four technology teacher. And we know that, I spoke to her today, and I told her I'd be saying this as well, is that she's on her way to get her certification. And so we're hoping that she also applies for this position, because we did post, originally we were going to do this as a point eight. Oh, you're right here. So, but anyway, she's on her way to get her certification, we're working towards that. And so what we're hoping to do is, we originally were going to post the position as a point eight position. So it would be point four, I mean, point nine, point five, and then Boilstone, and point four, and well, and we decided not to do that. What we've decided to do is, we're going to post this as two separate positions, Berlin specific as point four, and Boilstone specific as point five. We post for two weeks, and that's it. No more, and we shut it down. You know, she's very interested in applying for that position. We don't get any certification, certified candidates that fit our environment, and of course, you know, we know that we want to be able to keep her in our building as much as possible. But unfortunately, with the Department of Education, they're very specific, and we have to really show our due diligence to the state in order for them to approve, when they will not approve our waivers. So that's, it's a technicality thing, and it's a lot of ugliness that we don't like to do, but that's really what we're doing. So, you know, Patty's done a fabulous job with, you know, doing some of that technology work in the past. Say we actually have a technology class, we need a licensed person or waiver.
Can I just jump into that too a little bit? Because the other piece of your question, I think, Val, is just, we're talking so much about literacy, why can't we just keep that library staffed all the time? And the trade-off becomes, because that would be great. Because if you and I were talking, it would be great for teachers to say, you know what, you three kids, you're working on a project on Peru.
Monuments.
What is it?
Monuments.
Monuments. You're working on a project on monuments. Go on down, I know the librarian's there, and she can help you find some resources and access the computers in the room. And that would be great, but the problem is, it's all trade-offs in this budget. You know, we'd like to, we'd love to do everything, but if I spend the money to have a librarian full-time, then who do I give? Up. You know, what do I, what's the trade-off in the school? That becomes the challenge sometimes.
So, in my, you know, forgive me for not being fully informed, and for kind of learning as I go these past few weeks. But I, I understand that within the town budget this year, we have, we have a little bit of leeway in that if we, if on the floor of the town meeting, we voted for additional funding, for example, to maintain the librarian, they would not have to cut the budget in the town a different way. I mean, I'm interested, long-term, in helping the parents and, you know, the school committee and superintendent, everybody to, to be on this, kind of at least be informed and on the same page about what our priorities are. And if, for example, the FinCom doesn't recommend the right, an increase that allows us to keep our librarian, then as a town, we can say, well, actually, we want to keep our librarian and vote for it. So, in the end, like, how can we do that? How can we, you know, we were, FinCom gave you a recommendation, but maybe the parents in this town disagree. And we could vote for that chunk of the librarian in addition on the floor of town meeting.
Right. So even right now, the FinCom right now has voted, they've already voted.
But that's a recommendation.
Five percent. That's their vote that they've done, is that they voted to give us a five percent increase. Tonight's budget does not need that. I could not do a five percent, because I could not cut any further than that. However, you are always welcome to open that up on town floor. And I, you know, we're trying to find ways to improve as well, on how to educate parents in the community and show, you know, what our needs are and what we need to do. So we're looking at improving that, we've been talking about it. You know, this is my third year of budget presentation ever, other than being a special education director. So I'm always learning, and I'm always open to any topic of discussion on them. But I'd really welcome in December our discussions, February our discussions, and to come to those. And maybe what I need to do is, you know, when I do my emails out to families or whatever, I'll be more, you know, I'll be more specific in that email, maybe that will help also to draw more people to come earlier in that process. I'm also having, on April 14th, I'm having a parent chat Monday for any parents that want to come in and talk, or any further questions that are there, regardless. And usually, we have one or two, school committee, not to put them on the spot, but usually we have one or two school committee members that do join our coffee chats, so they are there as well and can hear those discussions. But yeah, I see what you're saying, and, you know, if you look at the line item, if it's not clear enough to you to know what the difference would be, I'd be more than happy to give that to anybody that wants to know what the difference would be. It's all public information.
So, I mean, specifically about this, about this problem, like, it would be, it would be helpful more early on to kind of get this, so that we, that parents can understand what's at stake. And so parents as citizens, you know, can, can make, and can have the opportunity to, to, you know, come up with ideas that, that are beside it. So, I mean, this, if we could do that now, I mean, I don't know, maybe not right now.
You know what? If you want to put that up in the coffee chat on this Monday? We can absolutely talk about it then, if you can comment, it would be great. Tracy?
I just had a question. On your previous slide, you were talking about the $98,000 for the total budget.
This one?
Yes. What is the Boilstone contribution to that?
They're at, is it $179,000 that they've added? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Their overall though, David, their total here, not just the Hondas, but including the elementary and the high school?
$228,852.
$228,000.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the two teachers who are being...
Yeah?
Is there any projection about down road, how that's going to manage with larger classes?
Are you talking about the fourth grade, or are you talking about like future, future? Or are you just talking about next year?
I see next year, I can guess how it's going to split, but the years after that.
The years after that, yeah. So we start having those discussions, once we start seeing enrollment, and what's happening, that's when we start having the discussion, like, like next December is really when we start really talking about that anticipation. So next December, just to be safe, next December, our budget will show two teachers in each grade level, to be safe. But as we get closer, we might not add those teachers, because we, as we see more enrollment, less enrollment, or we get more accurate enrollment numbers, we might actually decrease that, and we put it in in December, so we don't all of a sudden, in February, go, oh my God, we have another teacher, we didn't put it in the budget.
I just have a question on those two, but we wouldn't be expecting the teachers to be bouncing around between grades.
Some teachers will...
So they're not going to be able to get a set teaching curriculum that they...
There are many.
One year and then get to do it again.
There are many districts that teachers move from year to year. So we would try to do it, so we wouldn't see a teacher moving every year. Right? So they might move between two grades. So you might have like a kindergarten first, and you might have like a fourth and fifth. And these are just ideas, don't take them as that's what it is. But, you know, just to give you an idea. So it might be, you know, it wouldn't be like a jump where every year that teacher's going K to V. It would just be like a two-year, because that's, usually you have teachers that really like to specialize in the younger grades, and some that really like to specialize in the older grades. So you have to go with also the teacher's comfort level where they're at.
Could you explain, with the finance committee recommendation being one number, and you presenting the budget at a different number, can you just explain what that means going forward to town meeting and how that plays out?
Sure. So, or Chris, or Judy, if you ever want to, please feel free to pipe in on this too, because this would be my first go-around in regards to not having it approved here. I can tell you my experience in other districts, but I don't know if you can...
Well, on town meeting floor, the recommended finance committee budget gets presented. And then, the number that the school has put in as what they requested is the maximum amount that you could vote on the floor. So you've got the number from the school committee, you've got the number that the... So you've got the number from the school committee, you've got the number that the, you've got the number from the finance committees, you've got the number from the school committee, and you can really change it and vote any amount in between those two. Does that answer it? So you have to go on the floor and make a motion to change that number to whatever number you want it to be.
But the, we can't, we can't do an amendment to make it go higher than the 5.86?
You can go, that's the finance number. The highest number you can go up to is what the school originally requested in their original budget, which was.
Oh, in the original budget? Our original budget recommendations? This was our original, this was our, this was our last voted budget.
Did you vote 5.86 at some time?
We voted yes in December.
Oh, well then that's going to be your top number.
5.86 would be your top number. Which is, which is actually $210,000 more than what I have here. Carol?
I was just going to ask Judy to explain too that if you, the finance committee doesn't recommend, then the vote is a different vote than if they do recommend. If they could just explain that to parents, right? It's not, it's a two-thirds majority, isn't it?
No, 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 still, still. Borrowings. Okay. Well, that's my mistake.
Yep. So that means that we can't do what I suggested?
What Judy is saying is that, well, first of all, $210,000 more than what we're currently going to be voting. Actually going by the original vote, the original vote was $210,000 more than what we're saying now. So yes, we could be certain that need for the.
The original vote, which was how, what was the percentage of that? What was that?
It was like 11.
1%.
You have that, David?
Along that line. Free? Voting again tonight?
They're voting tonight on this minute.
So that would then limit you on the town floor?
No, it would limit you to the original vote, which is 2.8.
Okay.
Nadine, will you be presenting any of this at, at the town meetings where people understand?
Typically we don't. Typically we don't do that. But what I can do is I can have all of the handles that you have tonight. I can have copies of that and this presentation. I should have copies of this as well. Yes.
Could you please articulate for us if you, at town meeting, town votes with the finance committee's 5% recommendation? And we can bridge the gap between that and your 5.86 or reduce by what we're talking about tonight? What would be cut additionally from what is already, let's say a fair bonus?
What I had done, what, what John and I actually had done was we reviewed the budget. We also reviewed where the sources are that we want to keep reinforced. If we have to go down to the 5% budget, we would have to then reduce our, we were going to reduce our math tutor.
Math tutor. You were going to reduce speech and language.
Speech or language.
And reduce, eliminate enrichment.
And eliminate enrichment, which totally does not work with our literacy promoting that we want to do. And, you know, we want to put together at the beginning of the school day, we're hoping, we're still looking at the scheduling, but we'd like to be able to do a 90-minute block of reading every day where every teacher's doing, so we can do more flexible grouping, do more differentiated instruction with our kids and really have students working at their, where their levels are to be able to improve. In order to do that, we need our enrichment, we need our tutors, you know, we need our supports in there to be able to assist us with that.
Is there a document somewhere that articulates what those further reductions would be? Because I think where we're at right now is in a position where we need to convince the town that the 5.86 number really is as low as we can, as low as we can go.
So I don't have that right now, but I can always add it and put it on my website. And I'll put it on the superintendent's corner under the FY15 budget. Okay? Carol, can you just pick a note? Tom?
I've got some questions. You had talked about the ELA challenge and I like that you're addressing it. I picked up a number in there and I want to make sure that it's the right one. You said that you were adding to the budget $13,767 to address the ELA challenge that we've, that we see?
Yes.
Now is that a one-time cost or is that a?
This will be in there for FY16 as well.
Okay.
Because we're doing, we want to purchase that literacy program in FY15 and FY16. After FY15 and FY16, though, Tom, just so you know, this won't necessarily go away, but it may shift into our science and then into our social studies. These have not been updated in at least a decade.
Another one, Tori. And it gets back to those macro budget numbers. Okay? I, I always have a challenge with the way we're looking at it here because even at the numbers that you're showing, what the town has in there, we've bleated in true expense, what it costs to run things with revenue. And could you go back to that slide just, because I've got a question specifically with that last slide?
This one?
No, the last slide. Because even that has revenue in it. What I'm really trying to get an understanding for, and I think that the community kind of wants to see this too, no, keep going. One more. Right? That, this one, the Berlin Memorial Line, that FY15 number has revenue in it. My understanding is it has school choice in it. It does, right?
Yeah, that's, that's basically our net number.
Our net number. So it has, the revenue source.
Of school choice.
That's net of all revenues.
Right. So it has, if you took school choice out of that in both years and did a comparison, like, what I really want to understand is how much did it cost us to run the school last year? And how much are we proposing to cost this year, net of inflow of revenue? And as I understand that, the delta, last year we spent $300,000 on school choice in FY14 and that's in that number. This year, we're only seeing a revenue of $185,000. The delta there is $115,000, right? Is there any other revenue source in there?
There are other revenue sources. Does she explain circuit breaker?
I guess it's, revenue sources that are different year on year.
No, that's primarily.
So one of the things that are in here, Tom, that I actually learned this year myself, to be honest, to try to understand some of this, is chapter 70 is an offset, like you would subtract the chapter 70 funding here. Because it helps to offset what the town pays.
Okay, so chapter 70 is offset in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Just $437,000.
But you're getting less chapter 70 this year than you did last?
Correct. You're getting $500,000. You're now getting $437,000.
Because when I, when I did this calculation and you just looked at the difference in what you're getting from school choice year on year, the actual budget's only going up 1.1%, right? That's, that's real, what it's costing to run it. If you then took out the, the delta that you would say that would be in there for chapter 70, and actually you're looking to run the, the school on less money than you did last year. Really, we're asking the town to help fund revenues that we used to get from other sources that we're not getting this year. Right? And that's the challenge. Before we even started the budget, we started in a hole this year. And you're trying to find ways to, and because unfortunately, because what looks very challenging in this, you took two people out of this plus some and we're still increasing it almost 6%, right? It's kind of tough to get your head around, how can you be taking all those cuts and still increasing it so much? But I think what's offset here is that the revenue sources are in those numbers. So your true operating expense for the school is going down year for year on year.
I just wanted to start by one thing that we didn't start off the year with. I just want to clarify how that could be interpreted.
Yeah, yeah, I get, I'm saying.
But the revenue that we were getting from the state is a negative.
But you had to find those revenues someplace else.
Correct.
And really where we're trying to find that from is cutting services in the school, as you're seeing, as well as asking for more money from the town.
Right.
So is, is there going to be a plan then? You know, I don't know how much time is allotted and how much is allowed. But if this is confusing for us to understand, is there a plan to be able to articulate this to the town in a format where they can, they're able to compare the numbers and understand what was just said? So they can make an, you know, a decision.
So that's really, the purpose of a budget hearing is really for townspeople to hear what's happening and what's being said and what's, what's happening. That's really the purpose of it. You know, I'm really welcome to even talk further about it, even in coffee chats or if there's anything else going on, but at a, at a public hearing on town floor, there's not the time to really start explaining this kind of. Well, when you say have many other things.
To present the information, are you, are you going to be able to present it in a format that is understandable? I'm not saying you have to go through every line item, but to present it in this way so people understand. Are they able to differentiate between this, what this 5% means, that's all. So that they can vote in favor of the school.
So I'm open to suggestions, to write any recommendations, you know, like I said earlier is that, and I think I probably said it an hour before you got here, is that, you know, we're listening to any adjustments, whatever we can do to improve to help anybody understand the budget. This is very complex. When you think you understand it this way, then I show the regional budget. And then it gets a total, it's a whole of the story. A regional budget versus a municipality budget, two different ways of looking at things. So it is very confusing and complex. I mean, poor Chris and Dave, honestly, I think I drive them nuts. And they're going to smile right now and they're probably nodding their head. I drive them nuts because I'm in there all the time and I'm emailing all the time. What's this? How's this? What's going on? Just to get your head around these kind of numbers and, and understanding. So any suggestions, I always welcome, you know, email me or call me or anytime. Yes.
I don't know if anybody wants to like get out the words of this lovely woman that's videotaping right here. She's actually going to send over that tape to Berlin Cable Access. It will be on our cable channel. So send out the word that it's going to be on. Thank you. Broadcast on channel 13.
Thank you. Molly?
I think one of the challenges we've had in our community is the high turnover rate of administrative staff. So I think there tends to be a little bit of a mistrust in the town for budgets and for the presentations that are given with no judgmentary view or to anybody who has been in your seat for the last seven years. So I think that it's partially us as trusted professionals and parents in our community to try to get the word out and get these documents out and talk about them in whatever way you believe in. I mean, we don't have to understand it completely, but we do need to take away some important data and facts, like what could be missed, what might not be missed, what the numbers are and what we're willing to go with. I don't know how we do that in an organized way, but I think that coming from us, it's more trusted.
I think it's also, you know, I think you bring up a good point. I am, I was the fourth superintendent in five years. So I can respect that a lot. Change has been pretty sensitive.
And it's no disrespect at all. It's just that I think of the nature of town politics, that if they can hear from the people who are experiencing it from the level that we are, it may be more palatable and maybe more trusted.
Thank you. And you know, one of the things that we've decided to do too is meet with all the staff for the budget hearing as well. So they can hear and be a part of that process. And we talked about how we're going to do that even sooner than later. And so that we can start getting people to understand more of the process. It is a complex process. It's very complicated to, to know one's and one's budget to another. So.
Yes. So this might not seem like it's on topic at first, but it will be. Testing is a controversial subject. And one thing I realize is that some of the changes in the budget are, major changes in the budget are motivated by changes in testing, including technology and like, you know, having computers to, to do part testing and changes in literacy, which, you know, literacy didn't seem to be going down until the Common Core came up. So the question is, do we as a community really believe that the way our children are tested is actually improving their education? And I don't believe it is. And it is, I think it's my, my duty as a citizen to kind of, to try to influence an education system that doesn't rely on testing to guide their decisions. And if we are sacrificing some things that we value because of changes in testing, so, you know, a simple question is, are our children actually less literate this year than they were two years ago? Probably not. They're just tested. If we really believe in the way they're tested, then I guess, you know, that shows us they're not, that two years ago, they weren't as literate as we thought they were. But that's another question. My point is that I think that we could retain some things that we value if we didn't prioritize or at least, if we didn't consider testing to be the way that our, you know, the way that we know our children are educated. I mean, I believe that, you know, teachers in the end know better how to educate kids than, than a test. I mean, tests can be useful, but it shouldn't be the one guide and it shouldn't be the reason we educate. We can't be teaching to the test. That's the end. And, and it's obvious from the budget that we are. So I appreciate that, believing, I totally appreciate that.
However, there are state regulations and mandates that have changed over the last year. We have no choice, honestly, but to look at where our test scores are and where they're going, what are they today? Educators are now, by regulations and by state mandates, they are being evaluated on the test scores. And so it's up to us to also give them the tools that they need so that they can also show the great teachers that they are. Because I believe we have wonderful teachers in Berlin. And this is nothing to be thought of as the teachers. It's to me, it's what kind of tools we'll be providing for our teachers so they can teach for the 21st century skills. So yes, literacy might be exactly where it was. But when they are looking at project-based instruction and they're trying to get children to look at cross-references and applications and actual problem-solving skills who are weaker in that area. And that's what, that's what the new Common Core is really showing. So I totally appreciate what you're saying. But it's also our duty to have to worry about those sorts of things for various reasons, not just for the tests, but to be able to take our children to that next level. Not just understanding literacy, but how they apply it, how they use it, how they problem solve and how they can actually invent and investigate. Because that's the innovation of education and that's the way education is turning, is more towards that innovation 21st. And so it is our duty to do something like that. John?
Yeah, I just want to jump in a little bit because this comes up a lot, as you can imagine. And I, I think that, I think everybody, teachers worry about it, administrators worry about it, parents worry about it. I had an instructor when I went to principal school, he used to say, you know, weighing the calf doesn't fatten the calf. You know, it's, there is more to education than just a test score. And I think that you're right, there are places where you could go and they're clearly teaching to the test. And that is, it drives everything they do because there are certain districts where there are huge implications for them if they don't improve. We're not there. We're not in that place. And I don't think that, I think for our concern around data and where kids are at, we're still working toward a place where we're looking at testing data, which doesn't take us a real long time to gather, doesn't cost us a real lot of money to get to. I think we're still working on looking at, how do we use that data to make our school better for kids? And I'll just give you a quick example that relates kind of to the budget. When we look at how kids are performing with, with certain types of testing, and the MAP testing is actually a little better in this particular regard. And we think about where our kids' needs as we move forward. And then you think about, okay, I got to cut something out of my budget. You know, what's more precious to me? And that was part of the conversation we had about enrichment. Geez, if we're, if our goal is to take these high-performing kids, we can see through their testing that these kids have tons of potential, but if we don't reach out to them and offer them these extended services, they're going to just wither on the vine. You know, there are some pretty bouncy boys who you would never think were quite as effective readers and writers and mathematicians as they turn out to be. And it's because we can look at the data and look at how they're growing over time and go, wow, this kid, what he needs is a bigger challenge. And that's the upside to testing. Can't be misused, totally.
I would also add to that, that the testing is not only just the students taking tests, but teachers also looking at students through observational testing in the classroom. There's been such a huge push now on early childhood as well, and really looking at children at that age so that we can catch perhaps some issues they might be having early on, so they're not struggling in later years. So there's a lot of different, it needs a lot of different things.
Can I reply a little bit to that? So you speak about enrichment, but that's the thing that's in jeopardy because of things like a new literacy program that, I mean, what I heard was, oh, we need to get these test scores up right now, but we're cutting enrichment in order to do it. I mean, I know hopefully that we're not. Hopefully our town can, you know, come together and say, oh, actually this is really, this matters, we're going to vote 5.86%. But to me, it, it is a, like a matter of priority and a matter of faith about what is most important in education. So the reason I bring this up is because this is reflected in a budget. So, you know, like weighing those two things, a new literacy program which is responding to a test score, and enrichment. I mean, I don't know if we're getting rid of the whole enrichment program or just the kind of high performing, but, you know, that's just one example of, of what I'm talking about the, you know.
I'm gonna, excuse me. I'm gonna shut, if you don't mind, I'm gonna shut the conversation on that particular topic off for now, so that you can continue it at the coffee chat.
Okay.
Can you guys be able to be at that coffee chat Monday?
What time?
That you know of?
Seven fifteen.
Seven? Yeah. And the, and the only thing that I would like to add, if I may, is that this school has, when you look at value, and that's something that townspeople will look at, and is very important to the townspeople, is our money giving us what we want? And to be quite frank, it hasn't just been this year, it hasn't just been last year, but my experience in the last 10 years is that our school can be doing better than it is. And we really, test scores are just markers to let us know, are we on track or are we not? And ours are showing us that we are not on track, and that's the point, that's the point. And we need to take, oh, we have all these subcommittees that look at these initiatives, and what can we do to get us where we can be? And so we can talk more about that. But I just wanted to show, to bring that up from a towns person's perspective, that, you know, they, they are paying for our schools and they, and they want to receive good value. So we have to look at all that.
I just asked the school committee at this time if you are ready to vote the recommended budget, $2,652,005.
I just have one other question. Like with the kindergarten class, what steps have you been taking to know that that number's going to be pretty accurate?
It's pretty accurate. John, do you want to?
Just very.
As I can.
Sure, no, no, I'm happy to. It's, it's always a challenge with kindergarten classes, we do get some heads up from our preschool group, but we go to the town every year, and the town's very good about giving us the census information that they have. Historically, and this is true in most small towns, census information is not great. People tend to, and I just did it, I think I only have one kid, because you just see it, you sign it, you send it, and, and you're done with it. But we always struggle a little bit with, what is that number, what is that number really going to be? So we've been reaching out into the community, we've been calling people, you know, where we suspect that there might be a student. We've been in touch with the folks over there in the circle, like growing, I always want to call them growing pains, I know that that's wrong, growing something. Thank you. And kind of touch base with them a little bit. So we've done that kind of outreach. I'm pretty comfortable with the number there, where I thought it was going to be 19 without school choice. But we have called, there are three families that we've called and written to several times now, and haven't gotten a response. And the feedback we get from other people who kind of know those families is that they may well just be choosing to keep their kids home. And they're nervous about what is involved, and like, there's no real homeschooling component for kindergarten, because it's not required. But they may not know that. So that may be the next letter that we send. Is there anything that you need? But I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at in terms of a number.
Okay, so last year at this time, we had nine more students than what we currently have.
Can I just request a number, as ever reaching out to neighbors, what is the number, the actual number difference between 5% and 5.86%?
Sure. David?
Twenty-one, twenty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars.
That's it. That's the one.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to vote $2,652,005 as recommended?
So moved.
I second that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I would just like to just ask, Chris, I believe there's a FinCon meeting tomorrow night, so they'll, since you're here, you'll know what our school committee voted. What time is your meeting tomorrow evening?
Well, we have an appointment at 7:30 with the department. I think that's the start of the meeting, it'll be 7:30.
7:30.
I just wanted to add one thing though. By coming to the budget hearing tonight, I think I got more information than I had gotten previously since January, when all of this has begun for us. I have to say that I think we had better communication, not knowing that some of the things that are in the budget are things that are in the budget that were funded a different way. This was not clear to me.
No, we know that.
I don't, can't speak for the other finance committee members, but I have to say, I think that communication is key. And I think we've only gotten one copy of the budget from your department. Selectmen still have not received a copy of the budget. So I think if communication was better, I think that would certainly help.
Sure. I spoke to Scott on Friday, actually, he and I have been talking a couple of Fridays. Scott Hawkins is the chair of the finance committee, so we've been able to talk a little bit and go back and forth with him. So again, always looking for ways of improving. Making it going for next year and how we can improve it. So that's great feedback, and I appreciate that very much.
One other thing is that I think you've got a great show of parents, but I don't think other people in the town that don't have kids in the school have a clue about the needs of the school. Hopefully, this, having this televised again, a lot of seniors did stop me when I was on the school committee and say, I watched you at 2:00 AM. Because they run it all the time.
They do.
And that's, you know, whether you like it or not, it's helpful.
I've been to the coffee chat, the coffee on Wednesday mornings, the coffees have been today a couple of times, and it was, oh, it's not, I've seen you. It's true, they do watch you. I appreciate that. The school committee, you would want to close the budget hearing at this point, so you can continue your school committee meeting.
Okay, so we will close the budget hearing and move on with our school committee meeting. We have the warrants and payroll running around, and next we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I second that.
I saw just two titles in the March 19 minutes, and one was just a misspelling of a name, and the other was they put in the day instead of the. So if I just email that to Christine?
Yes.
Okay, did you have any other changes you noticed?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, we received some communications, communications regarding school choice, communication regarding a top on education from Jeffrey Canada, and some, several communications regarding budget issues. And my crowd left, I should have said this before, but those communications are so important to us, I can't emphasize it enough. It really lets us know what's on your mind, it lets us know what concerns you, it also alerts us to some misinformation and miscommunication that's going around that we can address. So you could always pick up the phone and call John or Denise or us, and the letters are always great as well. So I just want to say how much we appreciate that, and I hope it continues. Are there any petitions in audiences related to any items on the agenda? Did I scare you off?
No.
Okay. Okay, so next up, we have our superintendent's report.
The only other item I have is to, to let the school committee know our anticipated last day of school, provided no more snow days or anything, no more any kind of mishaps at all. We're hoping to have the last day of school for Memorial, Berlin Memorial is June 25th. We've already announced that Tejantos will be June 26th, we've announced that already at the region meeting. Director of Finance, will we have anything at this point, because we do the budget? Principals report.
Hey, just a few things really quickly. Just wanted to share with the committee, and Kristin, actually, you were there, we had DARE graduation on April 2nd. It's always a nice event. I haven't been to one since I was a teacher, so it was kind of fun to get back into that. The evening was actually kind of a special one. Officer Duncan Baum, who's done our DARE program, well, it seems like forever, but it's really, it's been 19 years. This was his last DARE graduation, as well as the last graduation ceremony for the two fifth grade teachers who are both retiring. So it kind of made the evening a little special. Mrs. Extron presented Duncan with a plaque honoring his years of service, and it was also nice, it was, his granddaughter also was a part of that ceremony as a fifth grader. So it was, it was, it was a very nice evening, very well attended, I was really pleased. We, as you know, ELA testing and MCAS was wrapped up in March, that went very well. Report carriers went home on time with very little problems, thank you, Paul. We did just to let the school committee know, follow up in terms of the revisions to the attendance policy. I've had many, many conversations with parents whose children can't seem to get through the doors on time, and it's actually been very helpful, because I'm getting a lot of feedback on ways we can make that easier for parents, to make sure the kids get in on time. So it's been a very productive, they're like 10-minute conversations. It's also nice to kind of just check in with people and, and see how they're doing. So that's worked out very well. And then the only other thing that I have, and you all have a copy of the school improvement plan for, for next year, it's like that. And I won't, because you've read it all, I won't go through the whole thing, I will just kind of point out that a lot of the things that we've been talking about in terms of working to improve student performance in literacy, working to improve student performance to the use of, the effective use of data, through data teams and through professional learning community activities, are a big part of our school improvement plan this year. What I'm struck with, and I know because you go to, all go to a lot of meetings, is that as an administrative team, the school improvement plans all look pretty much the same, we have the same goals, we tried to follow the school committee's lead in a lot of things, and that really streamlined the process for us. I think we're in a really good place going forward. Yeah. So other than that, are there any questions about the school improvement plan?
No, nice work. Thanks. Zalaya?
We have no business items this evening, so school committee comments, future agenda items.
We also wanted on there, in that same section, was to talk about any upcoming events that's happening at the school, that the school committee wanted to try to participate in, so.
Yes, there are many events. Ruth is on tap to go to the link meeting, May 1st, and there's a, let's see, May 1st.
Yeah, there's a lot May 1st.
Or maybe it's May 2nd. And the Memorial Day program is in the afternoon, Thursday, May 22nd, and I'll be going to that. Also in May, I think we need to talk about our dashboard, so maybe we could come together with a rough draft for our dashboard, dashboard for May, that work?
What is that, May? May meeting. Not 7th, right? Also.
With Berlin May meeting? Well, you have your, you have your try meeting, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
It's probably not a try meeting, maybe go into June.
To June.
But we do have a short, we'll have a short Berlin meeting in May.
You have a Berlin meeting on May, May 20th at 6:00.
Hey, that's post-early.
I'm just glad it's later in the month, that's all.
And just a reminder that our superintendent evaluations are due into Ruth.
Last week of April.
Last week of April.
Beginning of May. And then are any of you going to field for 10, the coffee chat?
I think it is the next coffee chat.
We're going to have it next Monday, on the 14th of April, at 7:15 at Berlin Memorial.
How do we communicate that to the community?
So I put that out on Friday, I'll put it back out like I typically do with my one call, email.
I didn't get it.
You didn't, or no?
I didn't.
If it was, oh, you.
I just gave a summary about it.
I did a one call.
Did everyone or one call?
Well, you know what, I did it, I did it to BMS parents.
I didn't get it.
Should it? I'll have to check the BMS line, I'm glad you told me that.
Do you have the email?
I'll look at yours. So we're gonna do, I'll do the, I'll do the all call to all parents like I usually do, not a call, because people panic when the phone rings, so we're gonna do it as an email, like I typically do my notices, so that'll be going out.
But now how about the rest of the clean, if you don't have kids in the school, is there, how can you reach them and let them know about it?
We typically put it on the website, and then we put it on one call.
Can we do a bolt town? Start and put it up in the blog?
Can you put it on the cable network? Cable network.
Cable.
Center with cable ball in the senior center.
How about the item? Cable ball in that town.
It's probably too late.
Too late for them, I think, for the item?
It's probably too late.
Okay. We'll look into it tomorrow. And Tom, you had a comment?
One suggested topic, whether late May or June, is learnings from the budget process. We want to make sure we capture them while they're fresh, so we can document them and make sure we can address them for the positive next year.
I think that would be a good idea to do even at a try, because I think all school committee members could learn from each other.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, we don't have a need for executive session, so I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
Also.
Jump in.
All those in favor?